Good morning and welcome, everybody. My name's Alice Nicholson, Policy and Improvement Officer. Actually, your first item of business today, you'll see the chair is vacant, is an appointment of a chair for today's meeting. Unfortunately, Jo Otten's not able to be here, so I'm now opening up and asking you for a nomination for chair for the meeting today. Mark?
Could I nominate Mike Chaplin? Any second, please. Unlucky, Mike.
Let me just check, there's no contest, so Mike is in the chair. councillor Mike Chaplin is in the chair today.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience and for coming here today. As Alice alluded to just now, councillor Jo Otten has been poorly. He is on the mend, thankfully, so we'll look forward to seeing him chair this meeting in September. The meeting today is open to the public. We have received questions from nine members of the public and a petition referred from council. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is in Tudor Square. So you all now know that I'm councillor Mike Chaplin for Southie, I'm councillor for Southie Ward. I'm going to go around the room and ask people to introduce themselves.
Can you start with councillors?
Let's start with yourself, moving round to the left then, please.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. My name's Sarah Bennett and I'm Assistant Director of Legal and Governance.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ashman Ali and I'm the Executive Director of Operational Services.
Morning, everyone. I'm Richard Ayer. I'm the Director of Streets and Regulation.
Good morning. I'm Barbara Masters, councillor for Ercleswell and substitute for councillor Jo Otten.
I am councillor Tim Huggan. I'm councillor for Crookston Crosspool.
Hi, I'm councillor Matt Jones, councillor for Boon Creek Ward.
I'm councillor Abina Malana. I'm councillor for Park and Alberthorn.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Clive Stevenson from the Licensing Service.
I'm Claire Bowles, Service Manager of Licensing Service.
Morning. Craig Harper from the Licensing Service.
Good morning, George Charles, Head of Waste Management.
Neil Tanroy, Waste Management Officer.
Ian Ashmore, Head of Urban Regulation.
Good morning, councillor Janet Riddler, councillor for Stocksbridge and Upper Don.
Councillor Paul Turpin, one of the Green councillors from Gleedless Valley.
Councillor Cliff Woodcraft, elected member for Fullwood.
Councillor Alexi Diamond, Green councillor for Gleedless Valley.
Morning, everyone. I'm Ryan Keyworth. I'm the Council's Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
I'm Alice Nicholson, Policy and Improvement Officer, supporting this committee.
Thank you. Can I introduce Claire here, who is making sure that we are being broadcast live on the internet and that our communications within the chamber are working? So without you, this doesn't happen. I must now ask for apologies for absence, and I would take it that Jo Otten is the only one, yeah. Are there any exclusions of the press and public? There are no items excluded. Are there any declarations of interest? I take it there are no declarations of interest from members. So we now move to item five, Public Questions and Petitions. We have received questions from nine members of the public. Some are unable to attend and have asked that these be read out. For ease, we will move the asking and reading of public questions on taxi licensing policy and matters to the start of item nine. Is there any dissent to that approach? In that case, we will consider the petition referred from council on the condition of Sheldon Road pavements under the Work Programme item.
So now it's public questions.
So on public questions.
We've got Bridget Ingle here to ask her a question, and then I can just read all of this out.
Okay.
So Bridget is over.
Yeah. Hello? Bridget Ingle, would you like to read your question?
Did you want to talk about the petition?
Oh, sorry. Petition first.
Sorry, Chair, if I might. Is that the Sheldon Road?
Yes.
The committee will consider that under the Work Programme item.
Can Sheffield City Council review its city centre waste management strategy for apartment buildings and landlords responsible for multi-occupational properties? Bin stores are not used properly, contaminated and overfull bins are not emptied, household rubbish is then piled up in the bin stores and on the street, the household rubbish on the street then becomes Amy's responsibility to clear up. Veolia has limited powers, which means the burden of responsibility falls on Environmental Protection Services to take the enforcement action. EPS do not have the resources to deal with all the problems which have been created through management companies and landlords not managing their properties correctly.
Thank you, Bridget, for that question. Do any of the officers present wish to respond to her question?
Chair, I can offer a response. I've drafted a response for the committee chair, councillor Jo Otten. But thank you for the question, Bridget, and the points you raised. The fact of the matter is that the Environmental Protection Act is how the legislation works about prescribing how householders present waste, and that falls down to those individuals that present waste and not landlords and managing agents. So we do have a problem in trying to enforce through management agents and landlords. But from the work that I know personally you've undertaken and you provided examples of, I agree that we should review our policy with Veolia and look if we can improve our lines of communication back to those landlords and managing agents to try and reduce the actual problem for residents in those blocks. So that's what we're going to do. We've got to work within the confines of the existing legislation, but we will definitely look at the management practice with Veolia following the comments you've made. Thank you very much.
We have another question.
Yes, Chair, there were a number of questions submitted that people weren't able to attend, and they were asked that I read them out, if that's all right with you, Chair. I'll just read them through for the record. So one's from Sheffield Food Partnership, asking, "In response to the recent national food strategy, does the council have a plan to implement the national government policy to implement free weekly separate food waste collections for all households from 2025? If so, is there any intention for this compost to be used between community growing groups in the city, as seen amongst other cities in the country?"
Jill, are you able to provide a response on that one?
Of course, yeah. The agenda item today is bringing a food waste trial approval report. So in the report, that explains the preparations we are making to roll out a free weekly food waste collection in Sheffield, as per the requirements of the Environment Act. We expect that to be a requirement from 2025, but we are pending government funding for how we deliver that service. So we are very actively modelling that in the background, and the food waste trial, the report that we've brought today is to help give us further intelligence on that. In regard to the further supplementary bit about can the material collected be given back to groups, I don't have an answer on that specifically. This material has to be treated at high temperature through anaerobic digestion to ensure pathogens and the germs within the waste are broken down and are safe. We would have to look at whether there is a mechanism for that processor to enable that material to come back to groups in Sheffield. I don't have a specific answer on that.
Chair, if I might. The other question, two other questions which I will read out that are not related to each other, but they're not part of taxi licensing either. So there was a question from Sean Clark on behalf of the More Market traders. Unfortunately, nobody was able to attend as they're working. "The More Market traders would like to wish the Waste and Street Seeing Policy Committee well in this new way of operating and hope that the More Market appears high on every agenda for regular discussion, improvement and comment, despite the fact that some council committees can sometimes be accused of being slow, indecisive and unresponsive. We have initial confidence, having met with Jo Otten recently, that you will be a modern, dynamic committee who will respond quickly and positively to the challenges ahead." There's a little bit more to it, but it then moves on to two very specific questions for you as committee. "Will the Policy Committee please commit to helping create and operate a clear and realistic improvement plan and investment budget that is urgently needed to help us make the market a celebrated world-class facility? And will the Policy Committee please highlight and recognise the importance of the More Market to Sheffield City Council and make plans and investments that will generate a better future for all traders, guaranteeing a better return for the council and, most importantly, for the people of Sheffield?" And then the other question I have here that I'll read out, and then, Chair, you might want to see if you can get answers today, is from Paul Stead, who says that "In April 2021, Mark Jones, the cabinet member responsible for Street Seeing, announced that Sheffield City Council would be integrating their online reporting system with Fix My Street. This is a far superior system and will save the council money. Given the financial pressures the council are under, why has Fix My Street system not been implemented?"
If I can respond to the first one, I think that would be better with a written reply. I'm mindful of the time. On the second one, I would hope that's something we can tease out when we can come to item 10 and the plan for 500,000 budget amendment for street scene improvements, because I did see something in the paper there that covered that off. I know that Jill has to leave us fairly soon for a hospital appointment, so I'm just concerned about item six, the appointment of deputy chair of the committee. We can move that. So if we're finished with the questions for now, yeah, we could then go to item seven, food waste, the food waste trial. And I appreciate you coming along today, because it can't have been difficult, can't have been easy getting here, Jill. So the floor is yours.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, apologies, I do need to disappear. Hopefully, I can get this boot off today, fingers crossed, so I don't want to miss that appointment. My colleague Neil Tanroy, to my left, is here to pick up when I leave, and Neil is even more expert on this than I am, so you're in very safe hands of taking us through this item. So to explain, we've brought you a report of a proposal for a food waste collection trial for the city. As outlined in section one, the Environment Act became law last year and places a new legal requirement on all councils who are responsible for collecting waste to collect food waste separately and weekly. There's no timescales given to that specifically yet. We are waiting for further government consultation on this, but it is anticipated that that rollout would be from 2025. Fifty percent of councils roughly across the UK currently provide some sort of food waste collection. Some councils collect it with garden waste and actually only collect it fortnightly, whilst others do do a single food waste collection on a weekly basis. Section 1.2 of the report explains that we are actively trying to model what this new service could look like in Sheffield with Veolia, because we are in the integrated waste management contract with them and they would deliver the service on our behalf. We also explain that we need confirmation from government of the additional funding for this new legal requirement to be able to roll this service out. You'll hear later on the budget report the financial constraints that the council is operating under, and it's imperative that we secure additional funding for this service rather than try and accommodate it within our existing funding. Section 1.3 of the report explains the basis of the trial, so the parameters in which we're seeking to operate. We're looking to provide the trial to around 8,000 households, and as a weekly collection service, we are looking to operate for four days a week, so that the fifth day enables us to ensure that we can recover any missed collections or deal with any service issues that are arising, because this is new for us and for Veolia. So we are looking for 8,000 households, roughly 2,000 a day, across the four days. In Appendix Four, which we will come to shortly, we have given you some options about the areas for inclusion in the trial, and we are suggesting we would either run from Monday to Thursday or Tuesday to Friday. Our recommendation is based on aligning the food waste collection day to a bin collection day, because the evidence from providers who already do this is that's how you get the most participation. It's too confusing for some customers if you have a separate day to remember to put your food waste out as well as your bin day. So that's the basis of the information we've put in front of you. The food waste trial would run for a 12-week period. It will be a start and finish, because we don't have infinite funding to continue this. Fifty percent of the cost of the service are going to be contributed from Veolia, and they will pay for the revenue element, so providing the collection vehicle and the collection resource and the supervision and the overhead, the support through the call centre, et cetera. And the council is contributing the funding for the caddies, because we would be able to take these forward into a new service in the future also. We'll also pay for the communications costs directly from the council, and that's from the underspend that's forecast in the existing waste management budget this year. We have secured local handling at a plant at Beely Wood. This would act as a transfer, so it's already operating as a de-packaging plant, so it takes food waste from commercial sources, strips packaging, and then they take it on to their processing facilities in East Yorkshire. So we've been able to access that facility to take the waste. As I've explained, it's a 12-week start and finish, so we will conclude the service towards the beginning of December, so it doesn't overlap with Christmas collections. And we've also included some parameters of the evaluation of the trial within the report. So hopefully, that gives you sufficient overview of how the service will work. Two caddies will be provided to each household, so one for you to use in your home, inside your kitchen and store your waste in, and a separate caddy to put out at the curbside on a weekly basis for collection. We're also recommending we provide liners for the caddies. Again, the national findings are that services are more supported when customers are given liners to keep the caddy clean, so we are going with that recommendation. If I take you now to Appendix Four of the report, these are the collection rounds that we are seeking your recommendation for approval, of which rounds you would like to see accommodated within the trial. So we've given you a breakdown from Monday to Friday. The selection of these rounds is to be representative of Sheffield households. That's the basis of why we've recommended these rounds, so that we can get the most learning from providing this service to those households. Officers' recommendation would be to opt for a Tuesday to Friday service. We would like to offer the service particularly to Friday collections, which are classed as financially stretched communities. National learning is that these are the hardest groups for us actually to engage both with recycling and food waste collections, and we feel that we could learn the most from this trial. The contrary part to that is that means we wouldn't collect on Monday, and Mondays are the parts of the city where we could actually expect the most yield, the most amount of food waste potentially to come out. So it's a compromise of do we go for highest amount of volume to get through the trial, or do we go for really understanding the issues that will be presented to us when we roll this out across the city? And that's a decision that's in front of you today to make. So, Chair, the process will be to run a vote through yourself on the recommendations. So I think the first vote is to either agree that the service would run Monday to Thursday or Tuesday to Friday, and then subsequent votes on each of the options for each of the days, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Jill. I have a number... Sorry, I've just cut myself off again. Yeah, I've got a number of hands have gone up during the presentation, so I'll take questions in the order I've seen those hands. And the first one is Mark Jones.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for that, Jillian. I'm really pleased to see this coming forward. I know you've been working on this for quite a long time. I'm still frustrated that government has yet to give us the money or shoot the gun to say when we can actually start this race, because it feels like they're looking for us to blink first and take the expense on ourselves so we won't get compensated later. So I know you guys have toughed out a lot of abuse for not already implementing this, but well done for bringing this forward. I have a couple of things that I think we do need to touch on. Looking at the way the plan's going forward and the Tuesday to Friday options and such like, one bit I am concerned about is if we get areas that are non-compliant, we can learn lessons from that, but then we may wind up getting subject to criticisms of failing to deliver this and deliberately gerrymandering the process so it doesn't all that, it goes forward and it can work. So any thoughts you've got on that would be good. I've got a list of questions. I'll try and stick to the most pertinent ones. The other one is, is that though we've got areas by economic circumstances and such like, we've not necessarily got groupings here in terms of urban challenges such as high-rise buildings and the rest, it's more kind of like down to the financial capacities of the communities rather than the properties in which they live. Which of these options do you think gives us the most complete view of what it's like to collect bins from really tight terraces up to flats, as well as those in more lethier suburbs where they've got capacity to store bins? Also, touching on from one of the questions at the beginning, yeah, I can understand why we would look to ship our waste initially somewhere else, because we haven't got the capacity here. When do we think, or as Veolia indicated, when they think we could actually have anaerobic digesters working here in Sheffield as soon as possible? When could they deliver on that element of it? And touching on the question from earlier specifically, here we're going to have anaerobic digesters, which make a lot of sense. We can capture some of the elements of that for heat and power and everything else. But is there yet a conclusive, well-thought-out process for disposing of both the liquid and solid waste from those digesters? As you mentioned, they're going to need to be subject to pasteurisation to get rid of any contaminants that may be in there, biological and otherwise. But is there a market established for that waste? Because it is the right thing to do to us go forward, but if we just merely displace one waste form for another waste form, we're then having the unintended consequences of creating more problems subsequent to that. So quite a lot there to cover, so I'll stop there. I could go on for hours, but I'll not, you'll be pleased. And who did you kick to get a broken foot? Don't have to answer that one.
Thank you.
Do you want to respond to that?
Yes, I can do. In terms of the not making the service work, I think was the first point. It doesn't, we've got to make the service work, because it's going to be a statutory requirement, so we have to have this service in the city, and it's when we're deploying vehicles and collection crews, it's in our interests as a city to make sure that they are fulfilled. So that's the idea, that we would get some learning from these financially challenged areas that we can learn more from than if we went into areas just with high yield. But that is the decision for the committee to take, because there are pros and cons to that, as you've illustrated. In terms of the urban challenge bit about high-rise, we have secured a commitment from Veolia that we would seek to add some flats onto each day. So we wouldn't be going for really high-rise blocks, because they present massive challenges about where you present the caddies and bringing caddies down from 11 floors. But we will be accommodating maisonettes and low-rise flats within each day for each round, so there will be some learning on that. In terms of the development facility of AD in Sheffield, as this is a trial, it's really good that we've been able to secure sort of sub-regional processing, so that's good. We're not going to get a lot of vehicle miles in terms of processing that waste, so that is a good result, and it, you know, it means this trial can be a reality. The points you've raised are exactly the challenges about securing AD in Sheffield. Who takes the off products from the whole process, and how do they get utilised fully? And in going to an existing facility, that's all been wrapped up, you know, and there's a reason why it's in East Yorkshire, it's because it's an agricultural-based area, so there is demand for those products. So all the issues that you raised and the opportunity potentially to generate AD gas and heat the district energy network is absolutely the work that we are continuing to do with Veolia. The problem is Sheffield on its own will not produce enough food waste to justify its own plant, so there would need to be some form of regional working to secure a plant for Sheffield, or more waste being brought in Sheffield to be processed specifically for that. Hopefully, that covers the points.
Thank you, Jill. Tim, you have a question?
Yeah, I was going to ask about, you know, as part of our commitment to circular economy, because obviously with the crisis in Ukraine and fertiliser being something that's directly impacted, one of my questions is, are you working closely with Veolia to make sure that any anaerobic digester, because Mark's alluded to this, is fit for purpose so that we, in any, you know, regional partnership, which is a good thing, to make sure we've got the optimal amount of food waste that can be then utilised, that can be then turned into fertiliser, that do all the other things that we want to use with our waste as part of a circular economy? How are we working with Veolia? Have we entered into discussions with other councillors, councils about how this may work? Is the first question. The other thing is, when I was looking at the picture of your bins, the actual, the 23-litre bin, they are twist-lockable, aren't they? Because they need to be, otherwise this will fail rather rapidly, this, as people try to take them out for collection, they spill over, the animals get into them, that sort of thing. So I couldn't quite see with the picture graphic we've got on that, and so that's sort of the other end of the scale that I'm asking about that for this, and just to make sure that we have put that into place, because that is something that is vital. I've seen it in other councils, you see, where some are lockable and some are, and the ones... the ones that aren't lockable tend to be the ones where there has to be quite a quick reinvestment in different kit that they hadn't had in the first place.
So yes, to confirm, we should have brought one with us, we were just saying, when you lift the handle, it does drop, the handle, it locks it off. It's like a little plastic mechanism on the side that just locks it off, which I think is what you're getting at. And I think it's on both of them, to be fair, but we'll definitely check on the five litre bit, yes, that, that. Yeah, that's fine. In terms of the sourcing waste for an AD plant and that closed-loop element, those are all things that we are in early discussions about. The, we are part of South Yorkshire Waste Partnership, so there is the opportunity potentially to look at joint infrastructure, and it's something the committee will need to think about how we take forward with our regional partners, subregional partners on that.
Thank you, Jill. Paul, I've got you next.
Thanks very much, Chair. This is really good, really support this trial, really optimistic about it. Do you have a few questions? It's, you claim that it will reduce carbon, but there hasn't been an impact, a climate impact assessment done on this, so I think, you know, you can't claim that without having done that assessment, and also that assessment needs to be done, particularly as there will be quite a lot of travel around the city and up to North Yorkshire or wherever the digester is. And also taking into account that food waste isn't fossil CO2, so, you know, I'd quite like to see that work done. You say that the caddies are made from closed-loop recycled plastic, so are you saying that they're made from bottles we've collected in Sheffield? The bags, you say, you say the bags are plastic, the bags that they use for the food waste service in Wales are compostable, and, you know, so A, not a single-use plastic, and B, you take out that part of the system where you're removing, or saying that you'll remove the bags? Yep, that's it.
Thank you, Paul. Jill, do you want to respond to that?
So in terms of carbon impact, we explained that we haven't got the resource, well, we haven't explained in the report, we don't have the resource to do the carbon impact specifically on this trial, you know, it's a small-scale trial. What we have explained is that we have to have some modelling for Barnsley, Doncaster, Rotherham and Sheffield as part of the South Yorkshire Waste Partnership, to understand the carbon benefit of food waste collections, and that does give a positive benefit of carbon reduction compared to our existing treatments. And a lot of the time, the carbon benefits of food waste collection are based on landfill, and that isn't the case for us in Sheffield. So the evidence that we have got on a whole-scale rollout, which was modelled by local partnerships, is that there will still be some carbon benefit for us for doing separate collections. But there were some assumptions in that about how far we were taking the waste to be treated. But we did model that on diesel vehicles. We are working with Viola to try and secure electric vehicles as we go forward, you know, so that is one of the ways that we can really offset the increased potential carbon from more vehicle movements in the city. And actually, food waste collections are quite well-suited to electric vehicles because you don't collect a lot of material, which is quite light, it's not big HGV frames. So that, hopefully that answers that question. In terms of closed-loop plastics, I can't guarantee that the material collected in Sheffield has gone back into those caddies, I don't have the level of transparency on that closed-loop. What we are told by our supplier is that it is a closed-loop product in that they are using recycled material to make those caddies. Quite often they are from old refuse collection bins, old real bins, and they're recycling them into the caddies. And in terms of the bags, Neil's just said to me that our liners are indeed compostable too. They are compostable.
So can you just clarify why, again, why there hasn't been a climate impact assessment? Because it's on all of the decisions now, you know, it's on the form, or it's even, is it new, Neil? Are you assigned to that role in this one, I imagine?
We've used the fact that because the local partnerships' modelling indicates that when we do a full-scale rollout, there is a carbon benefit, that's the basis that we've used for the climate implications on this report, rather than doing a specific impact assessment to this trial.
I just don't see why that we couldn't do one, you know, it's, all decisions now have that element on the document, and really seems like, you know, some things that will come through the committee might be more difficult to see why you would do a climate impact assessment, but I think this is a really good example, and as the tool is pretty new, it would also be quite useful for the council for learning to have done that work with the sustainability team.
We can do one retrospectively, it's not a problem. I think we just feel that there was going to be limited value because potentially it is a very small trial, and actually it doesn't scale up in the same way, especially if we are going to try and secure electric vehicles.
Yeah, thank you for that, Jill. That seems clear to me. You should be able to gather the evidence as you go along, and then use that for, in preparation for when we do roll this out citywide. Can I come on to Alex, Alexi next?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Gillian and the officers for the report and all the work that's gone into that. Also really excited for the food waste trial. I think most of my questions have actually already been asked by other people, but I've got a few follow-on questions, just to query why high-rise blocks have not been included in the trial. I understand it's difficult, but surely that would provide then some good data about how we're going to manage that. And it is, no, for my ward, like, waste management in those high-rise blocks is a challenge already, so it might have been good to get some data from that, so just something about the rationale for not. And then also, I understand now why that you couldn't have gone with it, there isn't a local provider that could have taken the, done anaerobic respiration, but was there a tendering process that, basis for the decision for Biotech for getting that contract to do that? And we've said that Sheffield doesn't produce enough food waste to have its own anaerobic respiration facility, but with South Yorkshire as a whole? I don't know if you could answer that question.
So in terms of the high-rise question specifically, I think we want to do more research with other cities and towns that have got high-rises and have actually made it work. Our anecdotal findings at the moment is that there's been very little success, and so we didn't want to have a huge investment of rolling out caddies, two caddies, to every property in a high-rise, for us to have very, very limited success. So it was a balance of risk with this, and there is some more learning that we can do from areas where food waste is happening with high-rise. So hopefully that covers that one. In terms of the question about tendering for Biotech for, Viola have exclusivity over our waste, so it's Viola who've secured that outlet for us, so there is no tendering process for Biotech in that way. And, sorry, I've forgotten the last question.
Sorry, it's just about, you said before that Sheffield wouldn't produce enough food waste, but with South Yorkshire as a whole, and is that something we could look at developing in partnership with other councils, or the city region?
I think whilst we have good data, relatively good data and knowledge on household waste streams, because we manage that waste directly, so we know roughly what we could expect to see from the household waste stream. The unknown bit is the commercial fraction and what opportunity that presents to then develop a sort of South Yorkshire facility. So yes, in theory, between the South Yorkshire councils, we would have enough for a small-scale facility, but it would still need to be supplemented by some commercial material going in. And actually, the more commercial material you can attract, the more benefit you get from a bigger plant. Just that clarifies.
Thank you, Jill. Barbara, you're next.
Thank you, Chair. The waste is going to be taken to Hillsborough in the first instance. Now, are there issues involved with that collection point already? Because I'm concerned that we all want waste collection to be successful, and it's not just the collection process, it's actually the processing afterwards. So is that going to be monitored to ensure that sort of any lessons learned from maybe traffic movements or sort of concerns of residents will be sort of also evaluated so that any future facility or this can be incorporated to, so that we don't, you know, cause dissension within the whole Sheffield community?
Okay, the facility has planning permission to accept far in excess deliveries of what we will be taking in. We'll literally be taking in one load a day on a relatively small vehicle. If we rolled out the scheme to the whole city and we still wanted to use that site, it would still be within the parameters of their existing planning permission. And if you're familiar with the site, it is an old brownfield site, so there should be minimal local impact to residents in terms of accessing that site. So we don't anticipate there being any issues from the trial because it is so small scale. And in terms of scaling up, if we did continue to use that site for a full-city rollout, it would still be within the parameters of the planning that the site has currently got.
Now, can I just check that you have got a process in place that sort of you can address concerns of any residents, because you know full well that sort of when the rumor mill starts working, that sort of it's suddenly a huge facility with all sorts of problems, and it's just a case of nipping things in the bud to make sure that residents go along with us as opposed to sort of set up barriers?
Yes, of course. Biotech are a national leader. They recently took over that plant in Hillsborough, it was under a more localised management. So Biotech have taken over the plant, they're a national leader in this provision. Viola have undertaken a compliance check, so we've checked all the planning permissions, we've checked all their Environment Agency compliance, their health and safety records, et cetera, so there has been a tight piece of compliance work there. And if there are local complaints, we will of course respond to those. Chair, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to hand over to my colleague Neil now to take any further questions and talk to the committee through Appendix Four, because I do need to leave. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jill, for coming along. Sorry we couldn't give you more time today, and I hope you get properly sorted out at the hospital. Mark, you have a question.
Thank you, Chair, for letting me come back in. One of the things that you have raised here is sustainability of food collection going forward. Now, considering that, I think it's still the case, I might be wrong now, our green waste, thanks, Jill, good luck, our garden waste currently goes to composting, which is out in the open, releasing significant amounts of methane. And we've just had a report that if we suppress methane production, we can actually maybe get ahead of the curve on climate change, maybe. So considering that a lot of the garden waste is not dissimilar to the food waste, could we look to blend some of that garden waste in to that to make it sustainable? Should that be the outcome of the trial? Is that part of our thinking currently? Or is that something we could investigate with Viola going forward to see if that is a strategy we could use to make sure that that food waste, more than anything, none of us want to be seeing waste going in the bin, none of us want us to see us buying food that we aren't eating. Most of my waste food in terms of coals of peppers and such like goes into rabbits to turn into poo, to turn into my garden. But we don't want to see lots of food waste, but we do want to see this going forward. So can we look at alternative creative ways of blending waste streams, even if it is just garden waste to get that bit there? The other element was, and it comes back somewhat to the high-rise question about how difficult it is to implement waste strategies on a citywide basis. And this comes back to something that I've been particularly mindful of as part of challenges that face parts of my ward, is are we in a position now of looking at differential provision of services for the city? At the moment, we've effectively got one-size-fits-all, but not everybody is able to utilise the recycling bins as well as others, for whatever reasons. There's often cross-contamination, which means that though you've effectively got weekly bin collection currently, if you cross-contaminate your brown and blue bin, then all of a sudden you're going down to a bi-weekly, two-weekly collection, because your brown and blue bins are out of the equation until it gets reset, and that's only done on a couple of occasions. So through this strategy and through the learnings that we were picking up here, and is there a provision to go forward, looking at how we can tailor the waste solutions for the individual communities across our city, rather than expecting everyone to be able to just use the one service as it is? That is something, I know it's not specifically for this element, but it is something that maybe we can look to investigate going forward and as part of the learning of this. Over to you, Neil, and good luck.
Regarding the first question, which is, I'm particularly more about collecting the garden waste and the food together and disposing it combined. There are local authorities that do that across the country, and the evidence, typically speaking, the collection frequency of that material then falls down to every two weeks rather than weekly, because there's cost elements involved. A, you're collecting a lot more waste, recycling combined, you're paying a higher fee for the disposal of both ways, you're saving the same amount of gate fee per tonne, but it's a much bigger tonnage, there's a higher cost accordingly attributed to it. So therefore, most councils then operate a fortnightly service, because that generally is what's needed for the garden waste, which is the bulk of the tonnage, rather than a weekly service, which is where the food comes in because of the smells and the waste from that. And the evidence suggests that participation in recycling of food waste drops if you're operating a weekly service, and also if you're combining it with garden waste. So there's a capture, but also a cost impact of that. There is, obviously with the current garden waste service, there is a charge for providing the service. Government in its initial consultation did put forward the potential to require mandate free collections citywide rather than charitable services. We don't know where the government's going with that. We have heard indications that maybe they've taken a backseat from that and maybe allowing a charge, whether it's a maximum charge, the councils like to do, that's why we need government confirmation that's come through. But once we get the clarity on that, and we are looking to produce a new waste strategy next year, we can have some sort of, everything's on the table really in terms of where we're looking at as the services moving forwards, but it has to be considered that there is a yield element associated with food, that's what I think food waste, fortnightly with garden waste, and there is a cost element attributed to it as well. The second question regarding tailoring services by area, flats is one thing, and then obviously you've got the issues with high-density terraced housing, you've got student populations, you've got issues of contaminated bins not being emptied. For this purpose of the trial, we are going to look at a small number of flats within that admittedly not high-rise. We are going to be speaking and contacting all the councils that are operating food waste collections at flats to understand what their learning is in terms of what the best examples of best success looks like. We'll gather that information, then we'll have a better idea in terms of whether that means for a food service, we have to offer more support to residents in flats to be able to use the services moving forwards. In relation to the reset of contaminated bins, residents are entitled to request from Viola an emptying of a contaminated blue bin or brown bin every six months, or they can choose to take the recorrect items out and present it on the next collection. So the onus is there on the residents to put it right, and we do offer them a facility of correcting it so they're able to use the service moving forwards. That is there. In terms of just generally tailoring services, again, it needs to be, the services we develop, we're a huge city, you know, we deliver services that are good for the city and based on informed services elsewhere and what works. Often there are certain issues, you know, we provide a lot of communication supporting student areas, for example, because we're aware that new students move in, they may not be from Sheffield, so they may not necessarily know how to use the bins where they move in. So therefore, each year we invest in comms that go out of their calendars, some reactive door knocking to help educate the students in the how to use the services. Similarly, in the BME areas, we've done a lot of work in Page Hall, you know, we know the problems in Page Hall, but we try to support those populations as well with translated videos, with translated materials. But ultimately, we do require... But ultimately, we do require the residents to use the services greatly. So you can look at tailoring services to an extent, but what does that look like and what does the cost look like as well? Yeah, does that answer the question?
Thank you, Neil.
If I could just come back on one small thing there, Chair. One thing that I was thinking about when we were doing the local plan and trying to get that ball rolling is the creation of sustainable communities and what they would look like going forward rather than as they currently are. And some of those city centre proximal sites that will have high density of housing could benefit from communal utility services areas as they do in, say, other places, Spain, for instance, where they'll have a communal collection area for waste and such like. Certainly, if we go down the route of having Caddys, it makes it easier to put it into a mass hopper. I know that there are pitfalls with that approach, but if that is part of our thinking going forward, it would be quite helpful to actually start using this process now to look at how we could utilise that going forward with our waste streams and everything else. As you say, there's going to be reviews. So looking at some of those more creative elements, it's not something to answer now, it's just something to throw out on the table for consideration. Thank you, Chair.
I'm not going to insist that the officer replies to that, what seemed to me to be basically a statement, Mark. Understand where you're coming from. I've been reminded that this meeting didn't get underway till quarter past ten. There will be a guillotine at twelve forty-four. So we really are under a time pressure here. Alexi, is it a quick question?
Yeah, it's okay, I can email Neil, let you hear about it.
Thank you. I'm going to forego my question as well. Because I do think we have given this a good discussion and question and answer session. We do need to come to a decision on this, food waste pilot. And I believe it's in two parts. One part is to determine whether we go for a Monday to Thursday trial or a Tuesday to Friday.
If I might, Chair, also there are actually two recommendations. One is that the committee approves the delivery of this trial. So that's straightforward. And then there's a second recommendation, which is the one that will go to a ballot around which areas, which days which areas.
Will that ballot take place today?
Yeah, we'll just do that as an alternative to a show of hands for or asking for dissent.
Cliff, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, are we going to be able to make comments as our views as to which areas are going to be appropriate for this trial before we take the vote?
The vote, you'll need to decide on which option you're going for, whether it's Monday to Thursday or Tuesday to Friday. And then you'll then, as a committee, need to decide for each of those days, if you can, which areas. Because if you look at appendix four and it's the plan up on there, it tells you what those areas are. I think in terms of reasoning, that's, I'm afraid, Chair, that's probably your discretion and how you wish to play this.
I'm sure we will end up doing that by a vote, Cliff. Can we, can we take a decision on the officer recommendation that we are? Are we all agreed that this trial go ahead? Is there any dissent to that? Then that part is carried. Thank you very much. So we will now go to a decision on whether we have Monday to Thursday or Tuesday to Friday. Paul, your hand is raised.
Thanks, Mike. Sort of query something. Is it possible to do, to have Wednesday as the day off instead of Monday or Friday? And because the wording underneath the table suggests, so selecting this round could act as a substitute for the Monday area, which suggests that there is an option to select it?
Neil? The, when we had discussions with Veolia, they were very clear and we agreed that basically they would have either the Monday or the Friday off to cover the mop up for the work during that week and also to review the full week's work from previous. So unfortunately not, it is literally, it was a choice of Monday or Friday.
Yes, I didn't think that was helpful, leaving that in there really. Could have done with that sentence removed before it came to committee. So do we have a view on which is preferred? Tim, you have your hand raised?
Just a slight clarification, this, because we said earlier that it would allow one day to go and pick up empty bins. If we're doing Tuesday to Friday, it means that some of these bins will be sitting out over a whole weekend to the Monday to be collected potentially. And is that an ideal scenario over a weekend to be left out as all?
Neil, can you respond?
Well, if it was left over the weekend, it's not ideal because the waste is left just for a few days. The nature of the food waste, it's not long enough to actually cause any serious issues with it in terms of flies, et cetera, over three days. Certainly, Veolia have planned the rounds on the basis that they are very confident about to complete the work anyway. It's just a safety there. And it's not just about the collection of any remaining bins, it's also about reviewing the week's work as well, how it's gone, looking at tonnages, looking at feedback, et cetera, so that we can be ready for the following week.
So I take it that can be done just as easily on a Monday as a Friday? Thank you. Can I have a view then on the? Sorry, just getting advice. Okay, we're going to be brutal here. Can we, can I have a show of hands for those who would prefer Monday to Thursday collections? I see three hands raised. Can I see a show of hands for Monday to Fri- Mon- sorry, Tuesday to Friday? That's clearly carried. We must make sure that some Lib Dem rounds do get selected amongst the Tuesday to Friday ones. Bear with. Yeah, if you've not already alighted, if you've not already alighted on it, page thirty-five actually has, which is appendix four, has the area options and there are maps following on from that. You will, you will see when you look at the maps, there are a number of ones where one ward is named, but it does carry a cross into, into a second ward. If I can take an example on category number five, if you look at Thursday option two, where it says pass and cross Southie Green and Longley. I can see from the map that it includes a part of Southie Ward as well as Berthwaite. But you will see that elsewhere on the other maps. So you've got some rounds which are only in one ward and some rounds which cut across two. Okay, so if you go to page thirty-five, look at Tuesday's options, can I have a show of hands for option one, Woodseats, Norton Lees and Mearsbrook? That's five for that one.
Sorry, how many options can we actually choose on this bit here? Because it's got a mix of one, two and three. Do we have to choose one option out of the ones on offer?
It's one per day, so you would. So can I see a show of hands for option two, Hillsborough, Middlewood, Mailinbridge and Wisewood? Okay, I think that means option one has carried. So we go to Wednesday, which is right at the bottom. Not sure why it was done that way. Option one, Chapel Town, Ecclesfield and Burncross. Can I see a show of hands for that area? That's looking pretty good. Does, is anyone choosing? That was the majority of the people here. Do you want me to go to the other two? It will, it will show a smaller number. Yes, it was, it was, yeah, it was practically unanimous. We don't need to carry on. So moving to Thursday, we've got option one is for Arbuthorn and Gleelis Valley. I've taken a decision here. And option two, pass and cross Southie Green, Longley. One for that. Thank you, Barbara. Lastly, we come on to Friday. We have three options here. I know Mark raised concerns about difficulties in Page Hall, but can I see a, sorry, have we got some conferring here or?
I'm really split because of the complexity and the challenges facing both Tinsley and Darnall. And I'm getting conflicting suggestions for both Tinsley or Darnall on this one. If I'm looking at Ian, I can't put Ian on the spot on that one.
Ask Neil then.
Neil, out of the two, Tinsley and Darnall, which do you think will be best for this approach?
I would say Darnall, in part because you've got more properties actually included by that trial area.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get some heckling, but I'll go Darnall then.
Do we go with the officer recommendation on that one? Spare us a lot of pain. Thank you, Neil. And thank you all for your help with that. So that's it, isn't it? What else have I got to do?
Yes, Chair, for that item, you've answered all the recommendations, both the recommendations and agreed.
Okay, thank you to Neil, and I'm sure you'll pass that on to Gillian as well. We can now leave that item. The food waste trial is agreed and we know what areas it's going to be in. So we can now move on to item eight, month one, monitoring financial position and budget timetable. And it's over to you, Ryan.
Thank you, Chair. Conscious of the committee's time, so I'll keep this as brief as I can. As the report sets out, the council's in a really challenging financial position and this report sets out the background to that, talks about the in-year position for the council and for this committee, and sets out the budget monitoring timetable for next year as well. The council finished last year, twenty-one, twenty-two, about twenty million pounds, nineteen point eight million pounds overspent. The position did improve towards the end of the year, but clearly that's not a sustainable position in the short or medium term. The council allocated seventy million pounds of reserves to support its financial position and to give it time and space to return to a balanced position. We've now allocated, as the report shows, about fifty-four million pounds of reserves, twenty relating to the overspend last year, fifteen million to balance this year's budget. And we're now seeing overspends in the current financial year of just under nineteen million pounds. That's at month one. For the committee's benefit, the month two position is very similar to the month one position, it's not moved on much at all. So what the report also sets out quite clearly is how the council over many years, in fact, has prioritised investment in adult and children's social care. And that has meant that other services, including many of those covered by this committee, have been cash limited in order to, in order to achieve that prioritisation. And it's worth being, you know, clearing up front with the committee on that. As at month one, as I said, eighteen point seven million pounds overspent. The significant areas of overspend are within the children's and adults committees, as the report highlights. For this committee specifically, a small underspend as at month one of half a million pounds. The month two position is similar, so there's no material change in the budget position from month one to month two. The challenges for this committee though really are in the risks in the future. We've talked a lot about food waste this morning. Implementing the Environment Act is a significant financial risk that this committee will have to address, as are energy costs and inflation relating to both the waste contract and the highways contract that fall within the remit of this committee. Because of the challenging financial position the council is in, our Strategy and Resources Committee have approved an earlier budget timetable for twenty-three, twenty-four than we have had in the past. It's about three months earlier in practice. There are no indications that central government are going to give us any more money. And that's the basis on which we're planning, to be quite honest. So that gives us the prospect of a fairly significant budget gap for the whole council when you consider the current rate of inflation. So we normally expect to see budget gaps of thirty, maybe forty million pounds going from one year to the next in a normal set of circumstances. Given the current rate of inflation, I'm expecting budget gap starting with a five. There'll be a medium term financial analysis report that comes in a couple of weeks to the Strategy and Resources Committee on the fifth of July that will set that out in some detail. That report will also set the budget targets for each of the policy committees. The report will also recommend, as the budget timetable sets out, that policy committees come to the September meeting with proposals to balance the budget to the target that Strategy and Resources will ultimately set. So that requires work between the meeting today and the meeting in late September, I think it is, for this committee, to work out how to do that. We will then consolidate the policy committee reports into a single report to Strategy and Resources on the twelfth of October. And that will allow the Strategy and Resources Committee to make any further decisions on resource allocation, moving between one committee and the next, but hopefully from a position of a balanced budget. The hope is that the process is complete by Christmas. That's necessary to allow the Housing Committee's report on setting the rent levels to be submitted to the February council meeting, full council meeting. And the first of March meeting, a full council, will also receive council tax recommendation and the general from revenue budget covering the work of this committee. That's all I need to say, Chair. I'm obviously happy to take any questions that members have.
Thank you, Ryan, for that presentation and for keeping it succinct. Cliff, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, I thank you very much for that. It's very informative. The one thing that sort of stands out for me is the cost of the street lighting. I was going to ask you a bit about it, but are you going to bounce that straight back to us and say that's our problem?
If your question was, Ryan, can we have some money to pay for the additional costs of street lighting, then I'm afraid that is your problem, councillor. If it's a different question, then ask away.
No, no, I'm not asking for more money. But the solution to economising on street lighting, that is down to us. You don't have any handle on contracts or anything like that.
I think if the committee wanted officers to, as part of the work over the summer, develop recommendations or options for how the cost of street lighting might be reduced. And, you know, I can, I can think of options that might involve the hours that the street lights are lit and so on. That's something you can certainly ask. I don't have an answer off the top of my head. We do see pass-through energy costs when it comes We do see pass-through energy costs when it comes to that sort of thing though, which is why this committee's seeing an overspend.
Thank you for that. Can I put that as a proposal, please, Chair?
Proposal that?
We do a study on how we can reduce street lighting costs? Yeah. What are the options?
Richard, you... Okay, so bring that back to us. Thank you. That'd be the time for next committee then. By which time most of the summer would have gone, won't it? Oh, sorry.
I'm just wondering, Chair, whether that would be more appropriate to bring as part of any budget saving proposals collectively rather than a single item?
Are members happy with that? For it to come through with several budget proposals for us to consider? But that's budget saving proposals, I should make clear. Mark, if you have...
Thank you. In terms of the proposals going forward and the stuff that we'll get from Ryan and his team, and I'm mindful that you're already under a lot of stress and pressure as it is. One of the things that I'm really mindful, and all of us councillors will be, is that any changes to service provision that we decide upon has impacts on the urban environment in which we all reside. Those impacts directly impact on things like the mental health implications of our residents. So if you're a marginal community, and I'm not thinking many within my ward, you're already under a lot of stress, certainly with the house of, the cost of living crisis that's going on. If you're worried about paying your bills, you open your curtains and you see more fly tipping on the street, that's potentially going to push you over the edge. So though that wouldn't necessarily be reflected in our budgeting costs, there would then be an unintended consequence of passing additional costs on to health services and health service providers. So as part of the impact of any of these suggestions that we have going forward, I'd like for that rounded approach in terms of the unintended consequences to be included in those costings. Because more than anything, none of us here, for instance, we increased the number of hours that the household waste recycling centres were open. A study would be helpful to see whether that did have any impact on street littering and such like. Because if we were to reverse those increases, would that increase in street littering and actually has having the more accessible diminished street littering? So those kind of questions would like to be looked at as a round, not just simply as a fiscal statement, but as a fully holistic approach. I hesitate to use the word holistic because it's jargon. But yeah, anything that we have to do, would it impact on the wellbeing of citizens, including mental health elements of, would be really, really helpful. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor, if I can perhaps just respond briefly to that?
Yes, please do.
Each of the budget proposals will need an equality impact assessment, which of course picks up many of the things you've just talked about. But absolutely unintended consequences or not indirect consequences, I suppose is probably a more appropriate term, should absolutely accompany any budget proposal that comes forward. Certainly something we'll work with the team supporting this committee to do that. That of course applies to all committees, it's not just this one.
Tim?
Yeah, just building on from that. Yeah, this all encompassing approach is pretty good. But one of the things is, because I think the extended opening hours for the, for instance, the household waste sites coincide with Covid, didn't it? And so it's now we're sort of into a sort of post-Covid situation is to see whether, by saving on one street, we then lose out on another, on something else because there's extra costs. And we just, then that's something we really can sort of monitor from now onwards to see whether that would be, because we might say we're going to save on one budget line but lose on another one. And so we need to make sure that we get that right. Because too often there are cuts in places which then actually cost more, even, not even in the medium or long term, actually a direct impact financially. So we need to have that as an approach.
Yeah, I think that's one perhaps for me to talk with the officers supporting the committee about getting a piece of work done to assess whether, as Mark said, the extension of the hours has led to positive benefits and therefore could we infer that reducing the hours would see a return to a previous worse situation with costs associated?
Paul, you have a question?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say on those couple of things, the council dimmed the streetlights a few years ago and saved money. I'm not sure that there's much left in there to reduce that service. And I would say, Mark, regarding extending the opening hours, from my personal anecdotal experience, it absolutely had a positive impact when, at the beginning of Covid, when there was queues of traffic outside the tip in my ward. I collected, I think it was 28 items of fly tipping within about quarter of a mile of the waste site. And of course, opening the tips for longer. There's still fly tipping, but nowhere near as much. And, you know, that's why we pushed so hard for it and definitely works. And also thanks to Neil, because he's been working with us in the ward on fly tipping and it's very much appreciated.
I think your point is well made, Paul, and I think it's something that would be echoed around the chamber from other members. Barbara, you have a question? Oh, Richard, sorry, he wants to respond.
Thanks, Chair. Just picking up on that point. The current housing waste recycling centre extended its open hours finishes this October, so there will be a full review following that. And then if we want to do that again next year, the sort of timescale, the April to October, and we all, as far down on the agenda, we're all looking on the forward plan. I'll bring in a full review of housing waste recycling, but also the wider view of your contract as well as part of this. So we'll pick that up as part of that piece of work. But there'll definitely be a review once October's finished this year.
I'm mindful of time. Can we bring this part to an end? And I need to ask you if you agree the recommendation, which is on page 11? Is there any dissent to those recommendations? Then that is carried. Thank you very much, Ryan. Right, we now come to item nine, review of private hire and Hackney carriage driver policy. Going to begin by receiving public questions relating to this item and ask that where possible, they be given up, aren't they be answered in the responses or a written response will be provided?
If I'm right, Chair? I've got two, yes, so there's Ibra and there's Nasser.
I don't know which of you is in the chamber first, but... Sorry, my eyes are on Ibra Hussein. So I'll take you first.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a petition and some questions. So shall I do everything together in one go? Chair?
Yes, you can do that in one go. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. My petition, first of all, in relation to the taxi trade, is with regards to the MOT test centres. And my petition is specific that we need more approved test centres, which are in line with carrying out compliant tests as well. Now, why I am asking for this is that the drivers who are licensed in Sheffield don't particularly have any choice other than one test centre that is within council in-house. Now, what's very strange is that drivers licensed in Wolverhampton can have a test in Sheffield and in Rotherham and then come and work with the Sheffield licensed private hire operators. That's very strange because they are picking up Sheffield residents as well. So me, as a Sheffield licensed driver, I don't have that facility or that choice. I don't have that choice. Now, in my opinion, they need to be approved. They need to be of a certain standard, which others are, and they must be safe. And also, there is no competition there. I pay as a Hackney carriage £59 and a private hire pays, I think, £54 to have a test carried out. And if you are licensed in Wolverhampton, you only pay £40. So there's already a £20 difference, £15 to £20 difference either way. And they can work as equally same as me, carry out the passengers in Sheffield as well. So why I and many other of my colleagues within the trade, 2,700 drivers which are licensed in Sheffield cannot have that choice in others' councils? I'm asking for a review of that and consideration by the licensing service and bring the report to this committee. So it can be looked at in detail because in the past, there was a tender out procurement to be put out. But the funny thing is, the councils never had that intent to give that out. They put so many conditions in a way, obstacles, that nobody applied. So I think it's been some time. It's important that that is given another fresh look and let's see if that is possible and mindful of others having a choice and we are not as the licensed drivers. So that is that with regards to the petition, Chair. And I'll move on to my general questions and then questions in relation to the item nine report as well. Question one, general questions list, and they should be before you as well. I'll give them in advance. What consideration will the council give to surcharge due to high increase in fuel prices for Hackney carriage trade? We've had an increase in, early on in the year. However, inflation was 5% and as you're well aware today, inflation is 9.1% and going up. And the fuel prices went up approximately from 50 to 60 p per litre as well since the last increase as well. So I'm asking for a consideration. Why is the licensing service not open? And when is the licensing service considering this option with timeline and framework? It's been closed due to Covid, but this building is now open. Many other council buildings are open and trade is asking for that as well. When will the licensing service publishers audit accounts for licensees to examine in depth for licensing service as a whole, including taxi and private hire section? I think the financial team within the licensing, within the council always drags its feet. I won't really blame the licensing service on this, but I think the financial team within the councils is always very reluctant to give, have a forensic look at the accounts. So we need some answers on that and this committee has the remit or authorised to do so. When will licensing service publishers comprehensive forward plan to bring in IT service and brings licensing service up to date with technology and portals so drivers can access long overdue service online? This has been a long outstanding issue. Council made investments in the last, in the past. Both computers never used. I think 60 to 70 K were wasted, but we need a forward plan. We had discussions with the interim head of the licensing. Very productive, I would say. But however, we need results and we need progress. I think that is very important as well. When will licensing service bring to this policy committee vehicle specification on board Hackney carriage and private hire policy, which was consulted recently? Working with other authorities to stop cross-border working? Can the licensing service publish its action to date and future plans, including enforcement? Enforcement is non-existent on this. To promote taxi trade in Sheffield? Can the licensing service publish its action to date and future plans? Licensing service takes in all the fees, but I've never seen in my 34 years do anything for the trade, to publicise the trade and to promote it in a good way. I haven't seen any and I want to see that. I think it's about time. What's there for the licensing service taking to assist, support and give incentive to local residents of Sheffield to technology tests in Sheffield instead? It's really disheartening to see Sheffield residents taking tests in other cities and then working in Sheffield. I think something needs to be done to look at that, to stop cross-border working. We need an out-of-box thinking on that. Can the licensing service publish its taxi trade recognition and engagement policy to date? Can the licensing service publish what support it has given a taxi trade within the last three financial years as detailed 1920, 2021, 2122? Can the licensing service publish its responses and actions to government consultation? Example, Department for Transport, et cetera, affecting the trade policy changes? Within Sheffield City Council, what representation has the licensing service made to support the taxi trade and publish its action as evidence in the last three years? I've never seen any evidence to date of what support trade has been given from the licensing service, which is disappointing that we need someone within the council to support it as well, not just take finance. What financial support did the licensing service receive from the government in the last three years? Recovid financial package and how it was spent? Proper breakdown will be appreciated. When is the licensing service proposing to bring forward review of the fees? And as previously reported, two separate reports, one for general licensing and other for taxi and private hire section. It's always very welcome to separate the two reports. It's been done in the past because then it gives the real in-depth of where our fees are and how it is done. So that's my general questions, Chair. And then I have on the item nine questions as well as the report officer is going to present. You want to do that as well now quickly? Okay?
Yes, please continue.
Okay, so for item nine, as before you, what impact or risk assessment carried out for this existing driver's licence due to change of policy or implementation? I would welcome a detailed explanation on that and how it was done. No indication given what the cost of refresher courses will be for existing drivers licensed? I couldn't find that in the report. No timeline or framework for implementation of new policy change for existing drivers? I didn't see it. If it is, please do highlight. What consideration is given for in-house training, sourcing out or from other organisations outside the council to provide such accredited courses? Will the licensing service publish in writing emails to existing drivers explaining in simple English changes agreed by the policy committee, avoiding jargon? Sometimes councils, information goes out. It's not in simple English. It is a jargon for anyone to understand. Delay periods should be allowed due to cost of living crisis for existing drivers only until everything is in place and existing drivers are kept updated fully. If this policy is approved today, I'm asking for a delay because if this is not done properly, because it's been done in the past, then there are implications for the existing drivers and this needs to be thought through properly. What consideration is given that the policy committee receive a detailed report prior to any implementation and mindful of cost of living crisis that is affecting everyone and special effects on self-employed? Cost of living is really, really bad. It's affecting all of us. Taxi trade is on its knees and it's badly affected. So that's why I'm asking for a proper detailed plan and a delay and how that will be implemented. It will be very important. What consideration was given to comments and feedback on knowledge test changes and revising the knowledge test in consideration of deleting routes section only and to stop and to help support, keep Sheffield residents applying for taxi badges and benefit locally to avoid and stop cross-border working in Sheffield? Bring the report to this policy committee on knowledge tests. These are my questions, Chair. Are you have a copy? Okay.
Thank you, Ibra. Are people happy for all the questions to be read out and then to get an officer response? And officers can decide whether they want to respond directly to the questions or whether they believe some of them may come up in the course of the presentation? Is that okay? Yeah. So Nasser, do you want to bring your questions? Can you put the speaker on?
So first of all, good morning, respected councillors, council offices and to public members and people that have come from the trade here today to watch. As we come to a very difficult situation that the taxi trade is going through at this moment in time. And can I first of all start off by saying what confusion we as a trade are experiencing at this moment in time? We've got three different committees where licensing is now being discussed. So we're here today as part of a waste management type committee, a regulatory committee to talk about badge conditions and driver issues and driver things. We've had a meeting last week with regards to clean air zones and the impact that's going to have on taxi driving. to have on taxi drivers. And then we've also got the licensing two committees, a licensing committee and a subcommittee. So we're having three or four different boards to deal with. So the work of a representative and a volunteer within the taxi trade, because we're unpaid volunteers within the taxi trade, me and my colleagues here today, that have taken away from their own businesses and their own things to be here. And the amount of time we're having to put in is absolutely phenomenal in this past week, week and a half. So we'd ask for some sort of clarity from the council with regards to, is this going to be the long term now process where we're going to have to prepare for three different subcommittees, knowing we're volunteers and we're doing it for free to help our trade and also to help the public of Sheffield, safeguard and keep them safe? Or, and can we get some clarity with regards to that? Now coming to the, the main item that I have where the comments, the questions are. First of all, something's been brought up by another trade, by another individual on his own accord with regards to a petition. Now, that petition wasn't presented as a formal petition on the council's website. However, it's been presented today. I'm here to speak against that petition as well. The reason for that is basically on the basis of safeguarding members of the public. Now, as you well know, COVID nineteen has had a devastating impact on the taxi trade. We saw many of our taxi drivers pass away with COVID while transporting hospital patients, transporting laptops to vulnerable children. You know, they've done absolutely phenomenal work, these heroes that are out there that I'm very, very lucky in the pleasure of having to know and work with some other companies out there, like helping schoolchildren with laptops when there was a shortage, getting them learning from home, whether it was distributing food via various packages they've done, you know, they're distributing medicines. They're absolute heroes out there on the road that we're now talking about in this way. The impact that's on their livelihood for two years, basically drivers were taking on pittance, not even enough to cover the bills. They were getting handouts from the local government to get support. Taxi licensing will tell you that, the officers will tell you the reality on the ground out there within the community. It's a terrible situation. Company owners here today will tell you what the devastating impact it was on them and also on their companies as well. The situation that we're in is because of this national shortage that we have of taxi drivers in every town and city that they're facing, in Sheffield you have that. But you have a cross border working where drivers can work from other licensing authorities in this area. Now, while our union position is that we would like local drivers, we wouldn't like cross bordering, we've got to face the reality. That's a national piece of legislation which authorities, although they can influence a lobby, they can't actually do anything about it legally. So therefore, because it's there and it's a, it's a national legislation, we've got to work with the system. So we would like to work with the system and say, if there are people working, you don't restrict them by closing lanes off and having it only to Sheffield drivers, which has been proposed in proposals and petitions. We need to work with these drivers and you need to work with the people of Sheffield. There's no point somebody booking a taxi from Sheffield to Rotherham, paying fifteen pound with one particular driver, and then one particular driver has to go all the way around the bus lanes and restrict him as an authority if you listen to what the petitioner is asking for. And then that person paying twenty five or thirty pounds. It's ludicrous. This idea will not work. So I'm here strongly to, on behalf of operators and on behalf of those taxi drivers out there that are trying to make ends meet at the minute, is to put an end to that and not let that petition go any further. In regards to the consultation the council's done, there's some fantastic ideas in this policy. There's things that we're really supportive of, like refresher trainings, but there is also like a massive downside to this, which needs to still be discussed and ironed out. So this four hundred page report that you find in front of you, basically, it's been in front of our eyes now a couple of weeks with regards to this meeting and being in front of us. There have been concepts that we have spoken about and we've done, but the consultation had a hundred and seventy eight or so responses, less than two hundred responses from a trade that has over three thousand taxi drivers out there on the road approximately. To have a hundred and seventy eight drivers, that should worry you as councillors today when you're making a decision on something where there's been so little impact, so little input from the taxi trade out there. With regards to operators, with regards to various others, the communication just simply hasn't been there. And I know there's a, not trying to blame the entire licensing authority by saying they're not doing the job properly, but there are other factors such as the COVID nineteen impact out there. Drivers have not had communications with regards to emails and various other things. So I'm asking you here today to defer this decision today with regards to putting through this policy. And the reason for that is because of the possible cost, not possible, the definite cost impact to drivers that we are still yet to clarify. We're also asking the authority here today to work with us, put back on the trade meetings which we had prior to COVID. And throughout COVID, there have been drop in sessions and things where we've spoken to them, but we need as a trade and trade reps, along with operators, to sit down across the table and come up with realistic ways of how we can also support the trade as well. There's many things in there that will impact on drivers, as I've said in my email to the council as well. So where we find ourselves now is in the position where the decision here today that is to be taken by yourselves needs to reflect the view of the drivers out there on the road. You need to work with us. And what I would request to yourselves here today is to defer the entire licensing, that this report and send it back to officers so the officers can come back to the taxi trade out there. And the representatives are all unanimous there, in, majority of us are in agreeance that we will want to work with the officers and we want to address the finer details of that report. Once you've made a decision, there's no point then afterwards sitting down because we wouldn't be able to undo any decision. However, if you delay it to your next meeting, we would be able to have that discussion and we would be able to come back as unified trade to also send a picture out there with the general public that safeguarding the public remains our number one priority as taxi drivers and as a union as well. And I'll just see if I've got anything else to comment on. But I do want to kind of, unfortunately, give you the consequences of if you take a decision to vote with and agree with the officer's recommendation and push this policy through, you'll create a divided trade out there. A council that doesn't listen to its drivers, that's another image that will go out there. Many drivers didn't receive the communication and the correspondence with regards to the consultation. There are equality impact assessment that's done in there and it affects being people within there. So it almost will come across, or the perception will be strong out there, that it discriminates against our minority communities. A trade where more drivers will leave the trade. You've already heard from other, another individual here today that there are people that are going and getting licenses from other authorities to go around the rules and go around the regulations, which is currently allowed under cross bordering. Although you can't do anything about that, you're going to have more drivers moving away. And we've seen that in Rotherham where this policy has been implemented. It's one of the most draconian policies. And for fifteen years as a representative, working in the taxi field and working as a taxi driver in Rotherham, tend you outright. It's a draconian, a very discriminatory policy, and that's why it was in the Rotherham advertiser last week, for those of you that want to make reference to that. So what we're expecting is, or our wishes to this committee and councillors here today is to adjourn this matter, defer it, whatever fancy word you want to use, but put it back through to officers. Let's have that discussion collectively as a community and let's come back with some sort of unity and let's deal with the issue head on. Thank you so much for your time and I hope that you guys made the right decision today. Thank you.
Okay, Nasa. Yeah, Alice is going to read out some questions from people who've not, who are not able to come to the meeting today.
Yes, there was, so I'll just read the questions out. One Sheffield licensed driver asks, what steps is the council taking in card machines as a licensing condition for all Hackney carriage vehicles? As a station driver, I see customers being refused for this sole reason. This should be a vehicle license condition immediately, in my opinion. Second question, the knowledge tests need to be separate for Hackney carriage drivers and a separate one for private hire new applicants. Another question from another taxi driver is, I would like to ask the board why are drivers being subjected to a policy where they are being discriminated against, where Sheffield City Council are trying to implement the double standard policy of being convicted of an offence of using a mobile phone device and having their taxi license suspended and not being able to apply again for a number of years? There was then a question submitted from James Martin on behalf of Transport for All Taxi subgroup. I will say with all these questions, members of the committee who should have had a sight of them, I'll summarize what James Martin says, but he is, he's keen to point out, the taxi and private hire driver policy update is really important for the disabled people of the city. We've regularly heard from people over many years about issues, many of which relate to driver understanding and or lack of response to needs. For the group of disabled people who have input into consultation responses, this is too slow. Safeguarding and disability and equality training are closely coupled topics. We hope that the period, and the ask is, we hope that the period to adopt disability and equality training is reduced back to the original period identified in the consultation and that a response will be given to concerns around Hackney drivers and exemption certificates. And they draw attention to the need, the background for quicker training requirement to be reinstated in alignment with the wider transport sector and that the time is now to redress that. They also talk about wheelchair assistance exemptions and that we need a policy that very clearly minimizes or makes it very appropriate why there are those exemption certificates. And if it's not possible to resolve that, they ask for a formal written response is given by licensing officers as appropriate, indicating the precise reasons that other transport industry rules are not replicated.
Thank you, Alice. Richard, do any officers want to respond to any of those? Yep, so is that?
Thank you, Chair. I think probably the best way to do it today in terms of timing is to respond to those question askers, if they don't mind, that we do so in writing within seven days. So Ibrah, your petition question and email one, the general questions, if I could get back to you within seven days on those, is that okay with you? Yes. Email two, the driver specific, the driver policy specific questions, Craig, can you pick those up?
Yes, certainly. So I've got a list of those questions on my computer, if I can go through them in the order that I've got, if that's okay with you. So in regards to the disability questions that were just read out by Alice. So in regards to the period for completing disability training, we looked at the comments received during the consultation and the process we need to undertake to source accredited providers and felt like a three year time period would be more reasonable. A three year time period is the longest a licensee can be licensed for. The safeguarding aspect is a separate to the disability training. Many drivers have already undertaken that for part of the initial training and we're also looking at other accredited providers to do that. And there may be an option for free training in house for licensees, so there will be no cost impact on them. Just to make you aware, we're still looking into that, so that is, that is not a promise, but something we're looking into. And in regards to exemption certificates for Hackney drivers, this is not something we've imposed at a local, at a local level. It's something that's contained in the Equality Act twenty ten, where if licensees have got some, I'll read the wording to you because it'll be better. So an exemption to assist passengers on the basis of medical grounds or the grounds that the person is, the physical condition makes it impossible, they can apply for an exemption for that. So that's something that's included in a national policy, not something locally. And then to move on quickly. So the questions that was asked in regards to the convictions of mobile phones and then the authority taking further action on that, again, that's not something imposed locally, but something that was imposed in statutory standards that came out in July twenty twenty, that any driver caught using a phone or other motoring offences would have a rehabilitation period before they could reapply for licence. What we've done during the consultation period, we've read the responses from the trade and licensees and we've removed that. So what we're now doing is a referral to our subcommittee who will hear individual cases and make a decision on that basis. So that blanket policy has now been removed. The licensing subcommittee though will use the DFT standards as a basis for making a decision. And then to move forward in regards to the anonymous question. So in regards to card machines, that's something that isn't related to the driver policy, but the vehicle policies, which will be brought before committee later in the year. And then in regards to the knowledge test, all licensees in Sheffield are granted a dual licence, which allows them to drive both a Hackney or private hire and they could swap on a daily basis if they wish. We therefore think we should keep the one test for all licensees and the standards are the same across the Hackney carriage and the private hire sector in that regard. And just to pull up on some of Ibrah's questions, so I'll be as quick as I can. So we've undertaken quality impact assessment in regards to this report and that is contained in the reporter's appendix. In regards to refresher courses for existing licensees, as I touched upon a while ago, we're still looking at accredited providers to undertake those courses for us and will look to provide free safeguarding trading where that is a possibility. In regards to implementation for existing drivers, so we've recommended in the report an implementation date, the first of September. That will allow us to write out to all existing licensees with the proposals and then any time periods will be implemented from that date. So a twelve month time period for undertaking the course will be from the first of September. Ibrah asked about in house trading, we're looking at all options that are available to us. Will we publish in plain, simple English, the committee of avoiding jargons on certain things? Yes, of course we'll do that. And just moving forwards, there's a question about the knowledge test. So we've recently reduced the pass rate from a hundred to eighty percent for knowledge test. That is allowing more local drivers to pass and hopefully get licensed with Sheffield moving forwards. And then the last question that Ibrah posed was a policy, a policy becoming before you on the knowledge test. The knowledge test is included in this driver policy, which will be considered today. And I can provide written answers to those as well if necessary.
Thank you, Craig. Sorry, Claire, you want to come back in?
Yeah, sorry, I'd just like to cover some of Nasa's questions, please. Nasa was particularly concerned about the consultation that was carried out. You're right, Nasa, we did only receive less than a hundred comments, but the consultation document was sent to all our licensed drivers via a piece of software that we use called GovDelivery. So it was sent in a bulletin to keep it as simple as possible. So the message was delivered to them quite succinct and they understood what was happening in it. And then there was a link to click through. So we sent that to two and a half thousand drivers. And where we didn't have those email addresses, they were sent a hard copy by a letter. The software gives us kind of reports out of that and it told us that sixty nine percent of the emails were opened by the drivers. So we feel that they did have a really good coverage, drivers did receive it. And then just moving on to one of the reasons that Nasa wanted to defer is that he wanted to look at putting back the trade meetings and, well, that's something that we've already done. We held a meeting with trade union reps on the twenty third of February this year and also on the fourth of May this year. So we've already held two quarterly meetings with the trade union reps. Unfortunately, they weren't very well attended. Invitations were sent out. Representatives from GMB did attend. Unfortunately, Nasa didn't, but his colleagues did. So we feel that the consultation was carried out appropriately, but obviously that's up to you to make a decision today. Thank you.
Right, so we've had, we've had questions. With time moving on, I think we're going to, I'm going to ask officers to, to give us a summary of the key points from this report. I mean, it's three hundred twenty nine page document. As bedtime reading goes, I've had, I've had better. But that's no, that's not to, to comment adversely on the hard work that went into putting all the information and legislation together to make up that, that report. So is that over to you, Richard, or to you, Craig? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Just before I go on to the report, can I just say that I do understand the hardship that licensees are going through at the moment in regards to the cost of living crisis? that licensees are going through at the moment in regards to the cost of living crisis. We've tried to be proportionate in regards to this, this report and policy. So, I'll be as brief as I can. So, we're seeking approval of the revised policy. So, we first published this policy in 2016, and it's been revised due to changes since that time. So, we're hoping the policy provides applicants, decision makers and enforcement with guidance moving forwards. And in providing this policy, it allows transparency, accountability and consistency across the licensing regime in Sheffield. We're hoping that the committee approves the revised policy with an implementation of the first of September. Just in regards to the proposal, so the licensing authority is responsible for the regulation of drivers in the district of Sheffield, and there's two primary pieces of legislation that govern that. However, in July 2020, the Department for Transport issued statutory taxi and private hire standards. The overarching aim of those standards was the protection of children and vulnerable adults who are over the age of 18 from any harm. It's a requirement of those standards for authorities to implement them, unless there's compelling reasons not to do so. And it's also important, it also states within that that we should publish a policy on our standards. So, therefore, it's important that we comply as an authority in regards to those standards that are nearly two years out of date. We've, as I've said, we've already got in place a public policy, but this policy updates from what we first had in 2016. So, we've reviewed the policy in line with the statutory standards. So, the policy is designed to provide individuals with a clear, consistent basis for submitting applications, provide a clear, consistent basis for determining licence applications, and provide licensees with information on licensing requirements throughout the time with which they are licensed. The primary focus of this policy is protection of the public, but in particular safeguarding children and protecting the vulnerable. And users of transport, specifically taxis and private hires, should be assured that licensees are appropriately trained and vetted, and held to account for their performance. This policy aims to achieve just that. So, moving forward, so the policy is designed to provide individuals with a clear, consistent basis for all those who need to use it, a consistent basis for determining applications, achieve compliance with legislation and those statutory standards that I've just informed of, and then support wider strategies and initiatives specific to driver licensing, including safeguarding. In regards to the consultation, just quickly, we carried out a formal 10-week consultation. As NASA's alluded to, we received 171 responses, 136 were from Sheffield licensees. And just to go over the most common themes that the consultation brought about, I'll be as quick as I can on this. So, in regards to the certificate, so the first stage of applying for a licence, I think there was some confusion in how that was written, so I've amended that. That is now just a requirement for new applicants, or those applicants who have not been licensed for a 12-month period, unless they have taken it previously. In regards to safeguard training, we're looking for all licensees to complete that within 12 months. Individuals who have taken the certificate will be exempt because it falls within that training. Consultation responses did ask for three years, but we feel that 12 months is sufficient, and will hopefully offer that in-house as well. Disability awareness training, we proposed 12 months. We listened to the response of the licensees and increased it to three years. It's something we've never done in Sheffield before, but we've realised disability awareness training is really important. So, we've gone for three years, we need to find accredited providers for that. There was a large part on language proficiency. We've listened to the consultation results again, and we've made a requirement for new applicants only, and that can be evidenced by the certificate which they undertake at college. We've removed that requirement for current licensees. The knowledge test, we've reduced the pass mark from 100 to 80% in order to hopefully get more people licensed within Sheffield. DBS checks, we've asked all drivers to sign up online, and there's a cost benefit for that of £13 a year. We're now duty-bound to undertake six monthly checks, other applications can range £40 and upwards. Overseas convictions, that's a requirement of the statutory standards, so we've, we've kept that in. And some other ones, I think a licensee wanted some clarification on the dishonesty in regards to the fit and proper requirement, that's something that's contained in primary legislation, and we'll use that basis for this dishonesty part. Motoring convictions, so as has been mentioned in some of the speeches there, we were looking at imposing rehabilitation periods on those. So, for example, you're found using a mobile phone, you'll have to wait five years before you can reapply. We've removed all those rehabilitation periods of motoring convictions, and instead, we've, we're going to do what we do currently, which is refer to the licensing subcommittee to make a decision, using the statutory standards as the basis for making a decision on that. Applying for hire, we kind of consulted on rehabilitation periods of seven years, we've removed that, and recommended a 12-month probation, 12-month period on that. And then the last one really is working for multiple operators. So, we understand that we've got licensees that work for various operators in and around Sheffield, for example Uber, City Taxis and Bolt. We've got no issues with that. So, we, we think you could have a driver working for City Taxis during the day, and then Uber during the evening, but what we don't want is, what we wouldn't want to see is drivers working for multiple platforms all at once, and then cherry picking the most lucrative jobs on that. So, that's why that requirement is in the conditions on that. And just to finish off quickly, reasons for the recommendation. So, the Department for Transport recommends that all licensing authorities make publicly available a policy document, and to review the document every five years. We have in place a document, this is the revised document, puts those standards into practice, and it's recommended that members approve the policy in order for the updated recommendations to be implemented as soon as possible. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that concise report, Greg. Do members have any questions? Right, so obviously Mark and Barbara, then Alexi, so Mark, over to you.
Thank you, Chair. This is a really complex area that we're looking to address, and in our first meeting, it's in at the deep end for sure. My primary concerns around much of this element here is I'm not familiar enough with a lot of the licensing rules to know what is absolutely mandatory, and that we don't have any ability to change, and what isn't. So, though the report is quite a substantive one, I may be asking for it to be even bigger, where, where it's actually hived off into two elements of, one element which is the stuff we must absolutely do, and when we have to absolutely do it, like if we're not in obedience of any particular national guidance now, what do we need to do to get that obedience done? And the bits where we do have more discretion on, some of the more local elements of that, how we can actually influence those decisions, because I'm really mindful that we aren't necessarily the authority on much of this. Certainly, some of the elements around the disability access to taxis and how this, how this report works, both for drivers and users, I'm unsure of. I was really concerned about the number of respondents, as the petition has asked, highlighted here. The fact that two-thirds of the, those receiving the material electronically opened it, does kind of answer some of the questions that kind of like, well, how, how many people knew about this? Well, apparently a lot. However, the sheer fact that they didn't respond also flanks concerns to me, because we don't know whether they're content with what's being proposed, or bamboozled by what's being proposed, or, or just simply switched off because they're feeling like it's been imposed, as opposed to proposed. So, some of those elements do concern me, that, who can get into a taxi, for instance, with a big disabled chair, and understanding which taxis are fit for them, and understanding which drivers are fit to take those big chairs, is something I have a particular concern with, because it's not just about accessibility for, for our citizens who can't get around the city, but it's also about maintaining the safety of drivers who are dealing with potentially dangerous equipment. I can't understand how all these elements blend into here, and I have to, have to say that that starts out to my ignorance, and, and I obviously need a lot more assistance and help in understanding those implications. The bits about the CCTV, in my head, it feels like the CCTV elements and the audio elements of, of the relationships that go on with drivers and passengers within the cab are important, because it can certainly mitigate any false allegations against drivers, but it can also preserve the safety of the passengers of it. How this can, we talk about it in this policy, but we don't necessarily say about how we're going to go forward with it, and how we're going to implement it, or what sanctions there would be for many of those elements. So, again, I'm not entirely sure whether this report adds or detracts from, from that safeguarding part. So, so I'm kind of really, really struggling on, on some of these elements. So, I guess if, if I was to have a question and not just a statement, Chair, it would be which parts of this do we have discretion on, and which parts of this don't we have discretion on? And is it possible for us, before we make the decision, to have further training and advice on many of these elements? And I know I'm only giving you these, these questions today, and I have not had a chance to do that earlier, but to a certain extent, that's due to the complexity of this. As councillor Woodcraft mentioned earlier, he's sat on licensing for a while, he's, he's probably better suited than most of us for making decisions on this policy today. I'm not sure I'm equipped for that, if I'm being honest, Chair. So, so actually, would it, would it be possible to get officer feedback on what we, what we do have discretion and don't have discretion on? And, and, and actually, does making a decision today negate any of that relevance for, for what we do going forward? Because I don't want to see us taken to the ombudsman because we've not got our policy, but by the same token, I don't want to make, see us make decisions that have unintended consequences to the detriment of both drivers and users within Sheffield, and that environment in which we're, we're trying to push things to a better position. Thank you, thank you, and thank you, Chair.
Yes, do you want to respond to that, Craig?
Yeah, I'll provide an explanation. I might have to bring my colleague Clive in to provide some further help. Just to touch on some of the things that councillor Jones said, in regards to CCTV element, that's not something that's part of this particular policy, but that forms part of the vehicle policies which we've recently consulted on. And then in regards to the mandatory, non-mandatory type of requirements within the policy, this policy kind of builds on what we had in 2016. So, in regards to safeguarding training, that's now mandatory. Probably the, the one piece of information, one piece of guide, sorry, the one piece of policy that isn't mandatory, but we're hoping to impose, is the disability awareness training, which we think is really important for disabled people in Sheffield. So, whilst it's not mandatory, we think it's something we should impose locally, on what a lot of other local authorities are now carrying out nationwide. Kind of to give you a brief example of what this policy is about, we want to ensure that all our licensees are fit and proper. That's what it states in the legislation. However, there is no definition of what fits and proper is. Therefore, we have discretion as local authority to impose tests and checks. Therefore, we ask all our drivers to go to college to complete a specific course, that was started in Sheffield and is now going nationwide. We do the knowledge test, the driving assessments, the medical assessments. These are all kind of, they're not mandatory. DBS checks, that's, that's now something in statutory guidance, which we've always done, but we're now building on what statutory guidance says, that's more checks, so it's six monthly checks. We can carry those out online for the people that are signed up online. So, there are many discretionary checks, a lot that have been in place for a number of years. So, the ones we're now including are the safeguarding training for current licensees, and the disability awareness training is something that's new as well. And then we've looked at some of the referrals to committee, on regards to motoring convictions and criminal convictions. So, the criminal conviction ones are borne out of the statutory guidance, so we have to, we have to bear those in mind. The motoring convictions, we listen to what the licensees and trade said, we remove those periods, but we'll refer to committee to make a decision with all the evidence before them. I don't know if my colleague Clive can build on what I've said?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, to try and answer briefly, councillor, the legislation dates back hundreds of years, to be honest, on some of it. 1976 is the latest legislation we use. The DFT have imposed statutory guidance, and we need to use the word guidance in, in reality. It guides licensing authorities on what they expect a, or from a driver, or a proprietor, or a licensee. And what we've done with these, with this policy is align the policies to the guidance. That is not to say we then deal with drivers on an individual basis, we do. That is different around the country, and I'm not sure colleagues from the GMB and representatives from the trade will, will back that up. It's completely different in every authority. Basically, you adopted the licensing legislation in 1976 as an authority, and then you did what you liked within that legislation. And that's why you see multiple layers and different aspects of licensing around the country, and you're getting a different type of vehicle. That's a Hackney Nottingham, that it is in Sheffield. So, we've tried in this policy to align that to the guidance. The fallback position is the licensing subcommittee, if it remains that way, deals with a driver as an individual, or an operator, or a licensee of a vehicle, on a case-by-case basis, but they must have due respect to the guidance. They can go against that guidance, and basically the DFT have turned this on its head. They've said, if you go against the guidance, you need to give reasons why you've gone against the guidance in the minutes to the driver and to the public. If you don't, if you stay with the guidance, the guidance is the guidance, and you've stayed with the guidance. So, on refusals or revocations of licenses, they would use the guidance and say, we believe you've not put your case forward today, and we are not either licensing or revoking your licence for these reasons. And now they have to put reasons in if they also keep his licence, like mitigate him circumstances, long history of good driving. And colleagues will tell you from the trades that we've had a number of licensees already under the guidance, being in front of committee, and they've not suffered what the guidance has said, which is a five-year, don't come back for five years, et cetera. They've had other, I won't call it determinations done against them, and they're still driving, most of them, et cetera, with mobile phone issues and, and driving issues. So, in a nutshell, we're trying to align in there. So, statutory guidance is what we have to do, and we have to take note of it, and then the rest of it, as Craig's pointed out, is what we can do and manipulate as a local authority for our citizens and our drivers within this authority.
Thank you very much for that, Clive. I'm conscious that time is, is moving on. I'm going to impose a guillotine at 12:30, that we take a decision there. So, in the meantime, I've got Barbara next.
Thank you, Chair. Right, I'll try to be brief. What would be the consequences of deferring the policy to say the September meeting? Also, you say a policy will be in place for five years before being reviewed, so what opportunities would there be to review the policy as you go along? A lot of the responses to the consultation referred to statutory standards, and therefore you couldn't change them, but we want the licensees in Sheffield to operate to Sheffield standards, so they need support. And so, you addressed some of the concerns, and I noticed that's sort of how you amended it, but I couldn't see, I mean, it doesn't bother me, the cross-border trade. And if we want our taxi drivers to comply with our regulations, what can we do to protect them from this in, in the guidance? Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. I'll try and answer the cross-border part first, and the consequences. Literally, since the Act came into power in 1976, the ability to, for drivers to operate outside of their area and pick up, pick up passengers has been in the, in the Act. It wasn't used regularly because of the old systems we had in those days, where you used to ring up a local firm, and somebody used to pin a job to a nail, and the driver was sent to pick up. As we know, since 1976 times have moved on, technology's moved on, and the likes of app-based systems have arrived, and drivers have moved with the times. It's been tested in national courts and stated cases, that a driver operating for a Wolverhampton, say, operator, with a Wolverhampton vehicle and Wolverhampton licence can pick up in Sheffield. There's no legal problems with that at all. It's called the three-licence rule. And therefore, as officers, we're very, very limited in our, in our ability to enforce, or even try and, for want of a better word, rid the city of those out-of-town drivers. There are obviously ways that people do it, and there's, there's other means and, and things of doing that, but would we want to reduce standards in Sheffield to allow those drivers to, to work where they live? Because a lot of the drivers are living in Sheffield, and that... And that is a committee decision. Our standards are set, as they've been set for a while. Our testing regimes are set, as have been a while. And we have those standards and we have a lot of drivers that have gone through a lot to gain a driver's licence in Sheffield and do a lot of homework and a lot of work to gain that licence. But it is open to this committee or to whichever committee, what those standards they want here. But unfortunately, the cross-border hiring is a problem nationally that may have to be addressed by national legislation if it was to change. We do work with operators. We have worked with one of the major operators on apps to ring fence their drivers out of the city so they can geo-fence the jobs. But they will only do it for Yorkshire, which is a massive area, as everybody knows. They won't do it anymore at the moment. We will keep working on that. But that is just one major operator. And what you find in the trade is once they learn the loopholes across the country, the trade follows and we've now got this influx where it's a major problem, whereas 20 years ago it was unheard of.
Thank you, Clive. I've got Alexi next.
Sorry, Chair, do you want to come in on the other points that the councillors raised as well in regards to not adopting the policy?
I think we need to move on. I'm going to let Alexi comment.
Right, I'd like to know what the consequences are if we don't adopt it today. I think it actually matters to the decision.
Okay, it's a fair question.
Thank you, Chair. So the statutory guidance came out in July 2020 during the first wave of the pandemic. We adopted some of it where we could and drivers have been in front of committee for that. But what the guidance says, the statutory standards say, sorry, is that local authorities must adopt a policy and to review it every five years. We can take interim reviews within that period if things change or we want to change certain parts of the policy. So in regards to deferring it, we may be negating the requirements of something that's the DFT national guidance. We're two years down the road since it came out. We don't want to defer any longer. We are imposing certain parts of it, but the policy brings together all those requirements and provides licensees and decision-makers within the licensing committee to make a legal decision on the licensee's kind of future within the licensed trade.
From what you've said, do I understand that even if a decision wasn't made today, you would have to impose those parts that the government requires you to?
Yes, so we do impose certain parts of statutory standards. But what this policy kind of points out is what we'll do at a local level in regards to them certain standards, so how we carry out certain checks and balances.
Thank you. Alexi, do you want to speak?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, first of all, I'd just like to again recognise the great sacrifice and service of taxi drivers during the pandemic. You really kept Sheffield going and actually saved a lot of lives and prevented a lot of problems in terms of mental health and everything. So I really appreciate that. And thank you as well for the report, Craig. It's really comprehensive.
Alexi, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do, yes, sorry. I think actually Barbara did ask the questions that I wanted to ask. But one was just on the disability, two on the disability questions. Could the time be changed to make it more ambitious? I know you said three years, but could it say with, we want to do it within 12 months, but we'll have a bit of leniency on that because it is a new thing, but an ambition to do it as soon as possible. Because I think it is really important for disabled people that that training does come in as soon as possible. And is there any leeway in the exemption of the Hackney carriage exemption for being able to take wheelchair users? Because as James pointed out, in other trades, like you couldn't be a train driver if you couldn't do that role. And why is that different? I understand the need for temporary exemptions if you've got an injury. But, you know, I think we've got, we have a commitment to 100% Hackney carriages being wheelchair accessible. I think that should remain. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. So in regards to the timeframe for disability training, that could be a decision that members make today to introduce a time limit. So we proposed three years. You have the ability to reduce that to two years or 12 months, as we initially consulted on. And in regards to the exemption certificates, so that's under the Equality Act, as I stated earlier, we could look at making a requirement that those who have got an exemption are referred to our subcommittee and the subcommittee make a decision on just giving them a licensed driver private hire vehicle, for example, or drive a vehicle where they're not loading and unloading wheelchairs. That's something we'd have to discuss at a service level to see if that's possible. Just for information, and I haven't got any facts or figures or reporting tools on this, but I don't think we've got any drivers with an exemption within Sheffield. And this has been in force since about 2017, I think. No drivers have got an exemption.
Cliff, you'd have to be very quick. I'm not sure you'll get an answer, though.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'd just like to make a point, echo councillor Jones. This is a huge topic, you know, very difficult to deal with. And I'm possibly the only person here who's actually sat on a licensing committee. Perhaps there are others. I apologise if you haven't. Very difficult thing to deal with. I'm very cognisant of the pressures that the trade are under at this particular time. And to impose these other requirements on them, I'm deeply concerned about that. Although I think the disability training is really, really important and I agree with Alexi's proposal of making it a two-year requirement. I would like to see, if we are going to do this, a revision of the Hackney charges very, very soon. I don't know how soon we can do that, but, you know, we're piling more stuff onto the trade. We're really, really struggling. It's been very well explained, so I think we need to do that.
Thank you, Cliff. And I want to echo that concern that nearly all of us here have not had experience of licensing committee. We've had no training in licensing. We've had quite a lot on process. So we should be pretty good at running a committee system now. Although with the deadline fast approaching, you probably wouldn't know that was the case. But I've really got grave concerns about taking this through today, particularly when it really should go to licensing committee, I feel, to get the views of people who actually have to make these policies work in the licensing committee. And I'd be then much happier for it to come back at the next full meeting of this committee. But we will have to take a vote on it. So I'm going to ask if any member wishes to dissent. Well, no, I'm going to phrase it the other way. Recommendation on page 46. That members of the committee approve the revised Hackney carriage and private hire drivers licence policy to come into force on the 1st of September. I would be voting against that. And I would want to put, if that, so if the recommendation is not carried, I would put in a counter recommendation.
Can I ask that, if we go with the recommendation, is that with the two-year for the disability checks plus an early review of taxi licensing fees? Would that be included in the recommendation? Are they, because they duly seconded?
Chair, that would have to be a proposal from the floor to amend the recommendation because the recommendation is to adopt the policy as attached to the report. So that would need a proposal of an amendment and we'd have to vote on that.
Mark.
Could I ask, if we were to ask that we got the steer from licensing committee, how long would that take? How quickly could that be achieved?
Chair, I think if we're going to do that, we'll have to bring it back to the next September committee and we'd have another session with the licensing committee, if that was this committee's recommendation, so that they could have an opportunity to consult on this policy and then bring back some recommendations.
Chair, you could seek a proposal, if that's the view of the committee, you could see, somebody could put forward a proposal of an amendment to suggest that you seek the views of licensing committee before taking a decision.
Yes, we're happy to put that as a proposal.
Then could I propose that we seek the views of the licensing committee before we implement or overwise this policy, if at all possible?
Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Nabila. I would also ask that we have some... Yeah. Yeah.
Vote to confirm that that's the decision.
Okay, all those in favour of the amendment? Can I see a show of hands? Those against? Those abstaining? Thank you. That amendment is passed. I would also ask that there's some training put in for members of this committee across the summer so that we can familiarise ourselves with what licensing entails in relation to the private hire and the Hackney carriage trade. Okay, is that now the main motion? Or is that fine as it is? Right, the amendment we just passed is now the substantive motion and so we do have to take a vote on that. So can I see all those in favour of the revised motion? That is unanimous. Thank you very much for that. Can I thank officers? I do appreciate there's a lot of knowledge and experience and hard work that has gone into this report. It's more a reflection of the change over to the committee system and having a committee that has next to no experience of this area of work. But we are keen to learn and hopefully this will come back. And that comments that have been made, particularly from the drivers here, will be taken into account when it does come back to this committee. Thank you very much. I'm now going to ask you to move back to item 6, which was skipped over. While it was very good of you to vote me in as the chair for today, it is an item to appoint a deputy chair to regularise the situation that was not ratified at full council. Is there any dissent to having Mike Chaplin being the deputy chair of this committee for the rest of this year? Thank you all for that. So moving on to item 10, Plan for the 500k budget amendment for street scene improvements. We've only got a few minutes, so can we... This does seem straightforward. We did get a chance to have a look at this before. And is there any dissent to this one?
Chair, I think this is an evolution of policies that I've seen going forward. I think Ian's doing some great work. If there was any dissent, it's can we try and get a serviced provision, not just focus on cars fly-tipping, but also looking at people on feet fly-tipping? Because that seems to be the only issues that I'm picking up with regards to the street scene element of that. But that would be the only dissent I would have here, Chair. And I'm really sorry, because I know you've done a lot of work on this, but we've run up against the time buffer.
Sorry. I would also add in that it was raised right at the start of the meeting by one of the petitioners, was the Fix My Street. Can we be sure that the 15k that's been set aside for that will be in there?
There is 15k for that, Chair. What I would say is that there has been improvement with the council's website in the meantime. It's still not 100% perfect, but there has been ongoing work. I think there were some technical issues to do the full integration. We can receive information through Form Fix My Street as an email, but it then has to be re-entered. The hope was that the improvements that have just been done and you can upload things and things like that will be sufficient. But there is still testing going on on it. But there is 15k in this report if it does require some further work.
Thank you, Ian. With time moving on, can I take it there's no dissent on... Sorry, Barbara.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I mean, can I be sure that you're going to evaluate this? Because it's a one-off and I don't want it to be one-off and then everything deteriorate afterwards. That's all.
Yeah, absolutely. There is a commitment in the forward plan for this and also the project that we are running with the LAX, which is about that transformational reduction on fly-tipping and graffiti, that there will be some regular updates. And part of some of the projects we have going on are about better presentation of the data, you know, pulling the information together from many disparate sources. So it's much more visible to LAX and Ward members and residents of what the plan is, you know, what's the strategy for the city to improve? What's the data telling us? Where are the incidents happening? And, you know, where are the costs? Given the financial situation you heard earlier, it's really important. So yes, I agree.
Thank you, Ian, for that. I'm going to have to impose another guillotine. I'm really sorry, Paul. If any member wishes to dissent on this report, can you please raise your hand? Then I take it that we're all agreed so that we can get this money to do the work that we really needed to do to clean up our streets and do all the other things that are in there. I'm going to defer item 11 and that will leave us with work programme. Richard, do you want to comment?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So we've started to develop the forward plan, which you've seen copies of. We've left the forward plan quite light as we get into sort of early next year to really reflect what you as councillors want us to bring as officers. So some of the ideas we've started to develop with the chair, the lead spokesperson, the deputy chair. We've got a key one, a Christmas parking initiative we need to bring in sort of latest November, around options around the Christmas parking. We're proposing doing a parking policy review. The last one was 2017, so updating that. And we'll incorporate yellow box enforcement, pavement parking options as well in there. Big one, looking at street scene improvements, so a link to the work Ian's already said, but proposals that can radically transform how we manage the street seat across the city.
Richard, can I just slip in the petition that came in earlier about Sheldon Road? Can we make sure that's included in the overview? Thank you. Oh, my goodness. You've got, I'm so sorry. It's been quite a job to manage this. Would you like to say a few words around your petition? I'm really sorry about this.
Just very, very briefly. We attended the meeting of the full council to put our petition so the councillors now know what the problem is with Sheldon Road, which is basically that the state of the payments is so bad that it's impacting seriously on the safety of the residents. We've been informed that a small group of councillors are going to go and have a look at the situation. So obviously, we can't, the process can't be advanced until they've done that. So thank you for coming out to have a look at the situation, is basically what I want to say. Okay?
Yeah, can I say, I did go and see Sheldon Road myself. I was on my way back from a... a visit out of the city. So I was down there the Friday before last. But I've asked for local councillor Nigat Basharat to go in my place on Friday, the 1st of July. And there'll be Joe Otten, who should be fit and well by then, long before then. And I believe a green councillor will be there as well.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Just on Sheldon Road, so it's currently under the Work Programme. Following the publication of the Sheffield Street Tree Partnership Strategy back in May 2021, on streets where trees may need to be considered for replacement ahead of resurfacing works, an online consultation process will take place before any works begin. The consultation process gives residents the opportunity to have a say, and challenge decisions around surrounding street trees through an open and transparent process. So that is part of the partnership of the Street Tree Strategy Working Group. In autumn 2021, we published an update on the status of all roads and trees where work was halted, as the councillor named Work did develop the Street Tree Partnership approach. We will publish a further update after discussion with the Street Tree Partnership, which takes place this Friday. The update will give an indicative timescale for resurfacing works where this is needed.
Thank you, Richard. I believe we're now offline, or about to go offline.
Just confirm the recommendations.
Yeah, just confirm the recommendations in the Work Programme report.
Can we confirm the recommendations in the Work Programme, please?
Is that all?
Thank you all very much. I'm sorry, it's got a bit frenetic towards the end. I do appreciate your patience today. It's a learning curve for us all. Thank you all very much.